That was manholes.
Oh, oh, the manholes for the grant.
Okay.
Yes.
And then which makes all the, which equals up on Richard Road to the pump?
Uh, no, uh, no, Alta Vista is a totally separate area from the Richard Road Brookside Lift Station.
Rich's Road runs from Business 290 on Rich's Road to the university. It doesn't touch Alta Vista. It bypasses Alta Vista, so I just want to know it's a separate.
I did that, but what you're showing with the water route, right, and which it goes to?
Okay, yes, it all ends up at Dooley Road or Anderson Road Lift Station. So, yes.
Which is the only lift station right there that goes to the university?
To the university, yes, that's correct.
And where are the, like, extra projects that's going on onboard these children? Like, have we looked into either, uh, lift stations somewhere else in the city?
Well, what we've discussed briefly is adding another lift pump to Dooley. Dooley has plenty of capacity, but there's currently two lift pumps at Dooley Road, but there's a slot for a third lift pump. So if we add a third lift pump there at Dooley Road, that should help out significantly. And then we'll have to collect some data and see how the city is operating after that. And as the city grows, then we take that data and turn that over to the city officials to, and let them know, you know, it's time to upgrade lift stations or look at building another lift station and getting an engineer involved at that point.
Thank you. How much would the classification work last?
Yes, sir.
What's the average cost for to put on a lift pump?
A lift pump, at this particular lift station, I already had a price. It's thirty-nine thousand five hundred. It's a pretty nice sized lift pump, but I want to say it's fifteen horsepower. Dooley Road's a pretty big lift station.
Any other questions, Mr. Counselor? Okay, thank you, sir.
No problem, thank you.
And, uh, Mr. Byron, we were out there, what, Friday? No, I called you Friday.
Yes.
And who was your guy that was on duty at that?
Justin.
Justin, because we had a situation at the end of Azalea Street in Rosewood, so we had to get that situation addressed. But also, next day, Saturday, we had to call out a vacuum truck in Pine Island, because there was a situation that ours wasn't big enough. So, Mr. Glover authorized him to call out a vacuum. So this work that we're doing to assist the whole system is necessary. So, again, for the record, just want counsel to know that these issues are taking place. Counselor reports. Counselor Rambler.
Good evening, I'll be brief. Um, just wanted to highlight a few things. Uh, last week, I was honored as president of the twenty-eighteenth humanitarian year. Um, I think that's testament to us as a community, not myself as an individual, because it's you who have allowed me to platform to serve, and it's with humble heart that I continue to do so. So I just thank you all for allowing me to be in the position that I am. And, uh, well, next week, next Wednesday, Wallah High, we will be taking high school juniors to PD to the campus. So I'm hoping that they stay present around the Red Cluck Forest. Um, closest sports football camp, June twenty-third, five to thirteen-year-old, if you have a five to thirteen-year-old who's interested in football, we'll be opening registration up in May. And it's free for, it's free for all, all participants, so I've been looking forward to your children, your grandchildren, nieces, nephews, anyone, nieces, yeah, if she want to play football, bring her out. Uh, it's, it's another opportunity for us to get back to our community. Um, elections April twenty-third, so city elections start, there's early voting, correct? So be sure that, uh, you get your voice be heard and, you know, do your city duty. As always, it is a pleasure and an honor to serve, and I look forward to that as I continue to do so. Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
I appreciate our role at the Red Cluck for you guys. Uh, but, uh, from our report, all I have is that a couple weeks ago, MOU was basically signed between SGA as well as the Purview Chamber of Commerce as well as Houston Chamber of Commerce. On the twenty-third, we'll be having a much more doors event on campus, uh, different entrepreneurs, uh, to basically come together, uh, that need mentorship, guidance, help, and they get such at Purview. And thank you as always, as a, and a pleasure to serve.
Uh, Counselor, may I?
No, we won't at this time, but thank you to all the citizens and everyone that came out tonight, and we definitely, definitely appreciate your support.
That's about it?
All right.
Okay. There's a, uh, on the mayor's report, there are a couple of things that I'll, I'll highlight, otherwise it's included in your agenda. The soil rejuvenation project is something that a businessman with scientists in Houston brought to the city. And in taking that to the university, we're working with the university on having Purview and M's research and agriculture department involved in soil research that's being done in twenty-two other countries, and it's been going on at least five years that I know of. And the Penn State University, University of California Irvine, and University of California Riverside are also involved in this project. And now Purview with the deans and the VPs over there will be coming onboard with this incredible soil testing, uh, situation. Basically rejuvenates the soil. It kills the pesticides and all those incredible things. And the soil is able to grow more, better, quicker, the vegetables and fruits, everything is growing. So it's, it's going to be exciting, because it's another one of those things that will put our university and for our city on the map, being a part of this national and international project. The Wallah County Mobility Study is taking place. I've been attending those meetings and just making sure we're included in some of the major parts in Purview is definitely the rejuvenation of Owens Road, because with the new police station, the retail center, the dormitory, additional dormitory, the research center that they're doing, um, and the new city, uh, university police station along those lines, all the way down to Jones Elementary, we definitely need some, uh, some work done on Owens Road. It's, it's definitely years and years in the making, so we're trying to get the, uh, Houston Area Gallatin Council to incorporate us, and that is one of the things that they have on their project for the next zero to five years, so we're in the short term. And, uh, several infrastructure meetings with developers as well as U.S. Department of Agriculture, so constantly taking a look at how we can get money to improve our infrastructure in addition to the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant that we received for the Alta Vista area, because theirs were the oldest in, uh, clay pipes that you no longer can even buy if you wanted to, that all needed to redo, and our guys have spent a lot of time and money constantly fixing those. But also the area along James Hughes Parkway, we're very close to and talking with the project manager and the city engineer and rolling out that million-dollar grant and putting it out for bid. So we'll be adding water sewer lines from Business 290 all the way down Owens Road, past 290, uh, from, from Business 290 down James Hughes Parkway, all the way to Owens Road and over to the new school, which is listed as the beneficiary. And what that essentially will do, will be looping our water, so the quality of water in the city, while superior now, we got superior rating from the state, the quality of water will just get that much better, because it'll just be moving, um, looped, if you will, per the engineer. The, uh, we, we continue to receive more, um, interested development inquiries from the, uh, several members of the One Hundred Black Men in Houston. Met with three of them just last week, so we're excited about them continuing to invest in our city. Attended the Economic Development Corporation meeting and just want to thank all of them for the work that they're continuing to do. The Purview Sports Complex, now I met with the owner last week as well as the president of the Houston Cricket Association. That, right along 290, will be generating a lot of business. Um, several inquiries, land has even been going ridiculously up from what some people were asking for it before, because some people get it. This thing is going to be a big deal. It's going to be the largest cricket complex in the United States, and cricket has a huge following, second only to soccer in the world. So we're going to have a lot of people coming. Fortunately, the complex is right along the freeway, so most of it will be akin to getting off the freeway, going to the sports complex, spending some money in whatever facilities are there, watching the games, and essentially getting back on the freeway. So no anticipation that this will disturb our incredibly wonderful rural community, but the tax revenue, as you just heard Mr. Johnson share, somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred thousand people up and down 290 every day, and they're leaving money in Wallah Hempstead and everywhere except Purview. Well, that's about to change, because we already have commitments for a Pizza Hut, a KFC Chicken, and a gas station on this side of 290, where the sports complex is going to be on the other side. And if you look at, if you look at the development by way of, Rich's Road is our eastern border, our western border for the city. So a lot of this development is taking place on our western border, right on the edge of the city, and the lone house that is just north of that facility, I met with the owners, I think I stopped in on Easter Sunday, yeah, it was Easter Sunday, and, uh, and met them, because they were some of the few people I hadn't stopped in and said hello to in the last twenty-two months. But she came in last week, and after discussing with her husband and, and a realtor, they're actually going to be putting their property up for sale. So they're going to be presenting that proposal to our planning zoning commission to change it from single-family residential to general commercial, and that way they'd be able to sell it, as Dr. Shower did a few years ago, right at Business 290 and Rich's Road, that property was changed from ag to general commercial. And now we have commercial development there that's going to provide some very, very needed, um, quality housing, especially for our student population. And I'll tell you folks, I've been in some of the places that our students are staying in, and some of them are downright deplorable. Had I seen what was in there before, one way or another, one of those places that just sold would have been shut down, because I wouldn't want mine or anyone's child staying in that. And we've got to do better, and that's a part of why some of this stuff has to come in. It's at least twenty years overdue, but it's coming now, and we need it. The university can't grow if we're not helping, because they need their land for academia and research and admin buildings. They're not in the housing business, and no university is. And we need to do our part, and that's taking place. Somewhere in the next eighteen to twenty-four months, we'll have somewhere just under three thousand new quality beds for our students to stay in, and they deserve that. You know, we didn't go through it when I was a student here, and I'm not going to stand by and watch them go through it anymore either. So as we get calls, and I got one today about checking on housing, as in my role as mayor and wearing a couple of these different hats, I'm following up on these things. And if we need to close some of these things, we're going to close them, because we owe these students, their parents, our city, and our residents better. And it's gone on way too long, and it's, it's going to change, like it or not, as long as I'm in this chair, it's changing. But when you look at the sewer leaks, just this past Friday and Saturday, the money that those things is costing us, because we haven't, you know, replaced those pipes, we're going after another commercial, uh, community development block grant, like the three-hundred-and-fifty, I spoke with project management about that. We get to apply every two years, the city has not been doing that. We are doing it now. So all the free money that we can get to improve our infrastructure, we're doing that. U.S. Department of Agriculture has committed to working with us to try to help us get our own wastewater treatment plant, so much so that they are paying right now as we speak, our city engineer, they commissioned him to do a study on what it would take to have a wastewater treatment plant on the south end of the city. All these problems and money we've been spending with lift stations, some of those lift stations we won't even need anymore, because if you don't understand it, and it took me a minute, we're going against gravity lifting our sewage up, because the university is the highest elevation in Wallah County. Well, if we're going with gravity, we won't need all those lift stations, the eight thousand plus a month utility bills, the constant repairs, almost forty thousand dollars just to add a new pump. That is not the lift station. That's just another pump. The lift station costs six figures, and some of them multiple six, depends on the capacity. So we're trying to get away from some of that, and that's a part of it. I was going to share it under my public works hat as public work supervisor, but I figured I'd just save it and do it all under the mayor's report. The flood committee has been meeting. Uh, some of them hopefully were able to attend the, uh, the meeting this morning in Houston with FEMA, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Houston Mayor Turner, and a few other entities in the Berry Complex in Cypress. I just had too much to do, and I just couldn't get away today. But we're staying on top of that, because we do want to learn, and I understand that if we do a damage study and then turn around and do whatever that study says we need to do to alleviate some of our flood problems, that the cost for the study would be borne and included in the FEMA work. So we're working on doing that as well, as taking care of our folks on the Ruby Road and Row area who are flooded out. I was blessed to, uh, be invited along with Dr. Cambrys over in the university's research department. We were asked to be a part of the two thousand eighteen Smart and Connected Cities Conference in Kansas City, Missouri, a little over a week ago, and it was such that we were the only HBCU represented. Everybody across the country was represented, they had a few people from foreign countries, but Purview was the only HBCU, and our contingent from the research department along with myself probably comprised almost the same amount of minorities that were there. So we had an incredible presence. They wanted to know more about our collaboration, our MOU, uh, what we were doing, how we were proposing to do it, and, uh, Dr. Cambrys and I were on the panel in front of those almost two thousand people, sharing that information, um, answering a couple of questions. And I shared, council has a copy of this, uh, packet, the, uh, the conference paid myself almost eight hundred dollar registration fee, and the reimbursement of thirteen hundred dollars, which is pretty much what it costs to go up and stay there and come back, that they will be reimbursing. And Ms. Dickey, I believe you have the letter and information from the conference people?
I have.
I just need to get those receipts to you, that way you can submit that. But I want the record to know that that didn't cost the city. They wanted us up there enough to where they paid for it, and that was a blessing, because , uh, Dr. Akajobi and his team were also in a separate speaking situation. So you had Purview listed with Oregon State and several other universities in quite a few cities, um, around the country, so that was, uh, that was an honor. Um, are there any questions on the mayor's report? Counselor? Okay, moving to item two. Consider and take action to approve resolution two zero one eight zero three two six regarding authorizing signatures for a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar community development block grant program for improvements to sewer collection system and rehabilitation of lift stations. And we've got some of the language under there, just for informational purposes for council as well as residents. What's council's pleasure? And for the record, one of the documents that council should have, I believe you received it two weeks ago as well as again today, was the authorization to use the funds. Everything has been approved. The environmental report came back, so they are ready to literally, uh, put money in our bank account, or at least allow us to process the engineer's receipts as we get ready to put it out for bid. So this is, for lack of a better word, money in the bank. Mr. Mayor? Counselman Jones?
Okay, now, um, last month, uh, we had, um, the mayor, the police chief, and I believe the judge.
Judge, yes, ma'am.
So are those changes, are, have changes been made to this?
Yes, uh, if you look, Mayor Pro Tem Wendy Williams was added, but I'm glad you bring that up, because one of the concerns and why the chief and the judge were added is because there have been more than one occasion when we're trying to get checks signed, and council, of course, with their respective schedules, work class out of town, we can't reach you. Now, if our two key management people, along with myself, Ms. Dickey, and Ms. Dickey is basically on the same level, if you will, over a department, like the chief over PD and the judge, the judge is also, if I'm not mistaken, didn't the judge assign her on our city checks?
Yeah.
So she was already assigned her, so I didn't understand what the concern was, because these are high-level departmental employees, already some signatures on accounts.
Well, my concern was that they are departmental heads, and why would they have authorization over purposes and the money for the city? I understand that people might be busy, but if you give them, give them advance notice of calling in and not wait till the last minute, but I don't see why your police chief and the, that was my concern, the police chief and the judge signing off on the funds for the city, that was my concern. It should be either the city council member, and they shouldn't be involved in that type of decision-making. That was my concern.
Okay, well, this is double check.
And I see that you made the changes, so that's my concern.
Okay, counsel, would you relate to that? Because in case it does become a ban, is that a uncommon or illegal practice?
Well, and then this is, when we, when we spoke, I, you know, I mentioned the council's concerns at the last meeting, and one of the things I suggested, what it shifted Mayor Pro Tem, which is what it did, and so.
Right, but, but my question is, is that, because we have judge for like, almost since I've been in here as a signer, as alternate signer, on the city's account. Is that an issue?
Well, here to know. You know, I, I looked at how another city has done this, and they had Mayor Pro Tem in that position rather than a, a department head. So as for, as far as a signatory on accounts, that's not an issue. This is dealing with a, a grant program, and so, you know, it was my recommendation that you have a city council member, which you did, and that's why that has been changed. That was my recommendation. And I will say, if you look at the bottom of the ordinance, there is a date that says March twenty-sixth, so that just needs to make sure y'all reflect today's date, which is the ninth, obviously.
If it is a document.
If it is a document.
Okay. Counselman Jones?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I say that we approve resolution twenty eighteen zero three two six regarding authorizing, authorizing signatures of thirty-five hundred community development block grant program for improvements to sewer collection system and rehabilitation of this, this three hundred fifty thousand.
It's been properly moved that we can consider and take action to approve resolution two zero one eight zero three two six regarding authorizing signatures for three hundred fifty thousand-dollar community development block grant program for improvements to sewer collection system and rehabilitation of lift stations. You've heard the motion, ready for questions?
Ready.
Okay, Counselor Rambler, you have a readiness?
Attorney Curran, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the mayor brought up a situation where, say, the mayor, city secretary, and mayor Pro Tem are unavailable, who's next, who, what is the chain of command as far as signatures from that point, if they're unavailable?
Are you talking about for this particular resolution? Because that's what we're on right now, this particular resolution.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, so the resolution sets out the, um, signatories as being, I just put it away. Um, there's two, there's two different signatories. There's the mayor, the city secretary, and the mayor Pro Tem to execute contracts, well, and then the same three, to execute any of the reimbursements. And so that had shifted from the last time, because you had the judge and the police chief allowing to do reimbursement, so we have shifted it to be uniform on this.
So.
So all three can sign.
Yeah. My question is, if neither, if neither one of the three are available, he, he brought up a situation where that, the judge and the chief were there, because there have been situations where people who were signatories weren't available. So if that's the case, and neither one is available, then it has to wait.
It has to wait.
That's the way.
Okay. So will they require all three, or just two?
It's two.
At least two?
Yes, it's two.
Any other readiness? All for the questions?
Questions?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And let the record show, unless I'm mistaken, that was unanimous? Thank you, counsel. Item three, consider and take action to approve resolution two zero one eight zero four zero nine regarding authorizing signatures for national incident-based reporting system, thirty-three thousand dollars in grant funding for required record retention system. Chief Solomon?
Yeah, uh, you guys have the report on this, uh, this national system. Each police department across this country will have to go through that system by twenty nineteen. By twenty twenty-one, it will be the only place where you'll be able to send a UCR report, which is a uniform crime report. There's things now that, uh, we don't actually get reports on, say, like, uh, fraud for credit cards and debit card fraud, we don't get those, and it's hard to track those across this country. It's becoming a growing, a growing crime. It will be something that we need to be able to track and understand how we need to handle those crimes. So it's a system, and we have a three-three thousand dollar grant. It's not, uh, anything that, uh, it's not a matching grant or anything of that nature. They'll give us the thirty-three hundred, the thirty-three thousand dollars. We will have to only maintain that system, which we do all of our systems every year.
Does the thirty-three thousand cover the cost of the system?
Yes, absolutely.
And that's my view?
Yes. Is that for the members?
Counselor Rambler?
I move that we approve resolution two zero one eight zero four zero nine, um, authorizing signatures for a national incident-based reporting system, thirty-three thousand in grant fund required for record retention system.
Okay. It's been properly moved, the second that, that we approve resolution two zero one eight zero four zero nine regarding authorizing signatures for national incident-based reporting system, thirty-three thousand dollars in grant funding for required record retention system. Heard the motion, ready for questions?
Question?
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Uh, number four, consider and take action to approve an MOU with the, between the Houston Irving Lee, Purview and M University property extension, EDS Technologies, and City of Purview regarding the homeless veterans' container home project in Liberty with the job training in Purview. I'll just say, would both, Mr. Eric, come forward, get to introduce yourself, or you guys, come on up.
Before Mr. Mayor would ask a question, um, we forgot that the information that David was to send to the video, some of the shows David was to send.
To the video.
To, because I had asked, because I wanted to see exactly how the program was ran, and I think he was going to send something to you, and you were going to send it to us.
Okay, well, what, what we're talking about this evening is a memorandum of understanding with no, uh, commitment on behalf of the city. What council has asked, and the memo has been signed, because there's no commitment, there's no requirement, but. But these gentlemen, uh, came down to share what the project is. Because what we're, what we're essentially looking at, this is something that they were already doing. And in working with them and getting to know them, all we're saying is the job training that Mr. Mohammed's company does with the Urban League and, and the stuff that I let them share is the opportunity, Purview has the opportunity to be included. This is already happening in Houston. But the, uh, job training and rehabbing the, uh, container homes will actually be offering jobs here instead of in Houston. But we'll let them, uh, share what, what they will, if you will, and then, then we'll go for mayor.
Sir, good evening, Mayor Allen, council members, constituents. I am Eric Goody, director with the Houston Area Urban League. Certainly we appreciate the opportunity to present this evening. Ma'am, with respect to your request, certainly we can make all of that information available to you. Uh, as the mayor has indicated, we look forward to the opportunity to bring these training programs pushing out north to the city of Prairie View and leveraging state of Texas tax dollars and other funding that we already have available to provide N C C R training, which is the National Center for Construction Education and Research, which then provides an overlay of fiber optic technician training, cybersecurity, drone technology and others that we will, will provide in the city of Houston, providing job placement for your residents. As the mayor has already articulated, the city of Prairie View stands poised to benefit from significant construction projects, including from the highway, commercial and the residential. The N C C R credential is going to build capacity in your residence to obtain the jobs from the prime contractors so that they can participate with jobs that provide livable wages. The Houston Area Urban League has been providing N C C R training since around two thousand. We've had contracts with Metro H R T, we helped build a light rail system in Houston, Texas. We've had contracts with Tech Dot for highway construction projects in both Houston and in Dallas. We've had contracts, uh, funded by the Texas Workforce Commission for Job Placement and Petra Kim, ExxonMobil, uh, uh, ExxonMobil, uh, Valero and others. So we know that this credential is a viable one and all of this, this project will rest on the N C C R credentialing partnering with E D S. Again, ideally to build homes for veterans that are displaced or in housing transition as part of a national model, frankly, that's going on with tiny and affordable housing. Dallas, uh, and Austin, Texas both have these tiny home projects. And so we're going to look at this as a model to bring this into the city of Prairie View, working with the city, P V A and M, the Economic Development Council, as the mayor has indicated, leveraging, leveraging tax dollars and other corporate funding that is already available. But ma'am, to, specific to your request, we'll make sure to get that information to you.
Thank you.
Oh, and, 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 and let me, because as, as you say that, because these gentlemen, having been before the council, the information that they were asking of the Economic Development Corporation, that's where they were bringing that. That wasn't to the council. So this is just on the M O U, they have a separate project to help, uh, maybe locate some, you know, acre or two of the land.